Good afternoon, it's Monday, September ninth, two o'clock, I'm calling the resources and infrastructure committee meeting to order. All committee members are present, staff present is our utilities manager Jim Green, our program manager Tristan Reaper, our wastewater supervisor Tony Arto, our water supervisor Cody Meeks, and we have our general manager Matthew McElany on line. Chair report. I don't have much of a chair report other than you may have noticed that we've canceled the October seventh meeting. And we're calling a special meeting on September thirtieth, there are a few things that we need to go over. That need to have a little bit of lead time between our meeting and a board meeting.
September thirtieth?
So it'll be September thirtieth and we are canceling the October seventh meeting so that next meeting after September thirtieth will be November fourth. That's all I have for a chair report. Ad hoc subcommittee reports, I believe committee member Meeks that you have an update on the solar hydro panel?
Well, partially, I've made contact again with Matt, Matt is my was my initial contact at at Source Global, I've been on a couple of rather large projects in the south. And he did let me know that he may not be available, so he wasn't, so I had made contact with him again just like a couple of weeks ago, he called me back. And we were supposed to meet, do a phone call on Friday. I got, I got a schedule conflict and then today I'm attending, we were rescheduled, he had a schedule conflict. So now he just called me when I was driving here, so we're gonna meet again tomorrow and to basically pick up where we left off, but you know, basically, I had notes here from my last conversation with him and each, each panel is basically gonna give us, he estimated, you gave him some coordinates of where that, that parcel was. And I guess they use that and they're, they're, they're estimating that'd be somewhere between three or four liters a day per panel, which would equate to about, well, yearly would equate to like less than an acre of like two hundred and ninety-three thousand gallons. So, I mean, that's a thousand panels.
Over what time period?
A year. Two hundred and ninety-three thousand.
That's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
Okay, and I think you've figured out how many panels would fit on an acre?
Right.
And figuring that out. What would the water production per acre be?
So if we and expand it out on that.
Did you get a cost for a thousand panels?
No, I couldn't cut that far. I was thinking maybe we would maybe it would perhaps if we were still interested in it, maybe just engage in like a pilot program and maybe do X amount, you know, maybe a smaller section and just see what we're really getting, because it's, it's a rough average. And it's gonna, you know, obviously it's dependent upon weather conditions, so it's gonna vary anywhere from three to five, they can't really nail it down. He said low end three, high end five liters.
So that equates to about gallon and a third, so about one point three four gallons, which is basically like a low flow toilet flush. So if four by eight panels, thirty-two square feet, you could put thirteen hundred and sixty-one panels in an acre. That would provide you, based on that three liter or three to five and that one point three four gallons per panel, that would give you eighteen hundred and fifty-one point three gallons per day per acre, which puts you at an annual yield of about six seventy, six hundred and seventy seven hundred and twenty-four gallons, a couple of acre feet, yeah, just a, just over two acre feet there, which is about a daily consumption for us.
And that's thirteen hundred panels?
Yeah, that's one acre at an average production there, and I tweaked up the numbers a little bit. But that's about a one point five per panel. So yeah, that'd give you about six hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons annually.
And that's a day's use of water here?
It's a day's use of water, basically from June through September right now.
But you would use it for processing, some sort of, what purpose would you use it for, processing water at the WRF? Or would you just be injecting that back into the groundwater table?
So this would be, so this is kind of a new technology, right? And I'm not sure how other municipalities or agencies are doing this, but we'd have to work with the division drinking water and see what means would be acceptable for them, we'd have to provide some treatment. So on top of that water that we're receiving, we'd have to run it through some sort of treatment plant. Either filtration, that's infection, I'm not sure, they, most likely they default to surface water treatment plant, which is, you know, coagulation, filtration and disinfection, so basically it'd be like having another one of our SR three or SR four wells. They're to have to process that water.
So that means you'd have to take it back, right?
Uh, we'd have to plumbing somewhere for treatment, right?
Doesn't sound like it's gonna be very cost effective.
Uh, now if we're having to design a plant specifically for that, if we could make a bypass and run it through like the reverse osmosis portion or a couple of trains of the WRF, I mean, that would be beneficial right there. I'm just not sure what kind of practice for treatment that they would recognize and accept.
Does it use a direct for direct water space and you can drink, it's drinking water, that's what they
But being a municipality
Sure, it's a different, it's a, it's commercial and I get it's completely different.
I think Mr.
I think we're gonna have on the same, same, same path there is, yeah, even though it needs domestic drinking standards for an individual who would put one on their house. It may not meet your municipal standards.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe not.
So do we want him to continue pursuing more information on this, or do you think it's
Oh, they couldn't have the cost. So we could at least close the book. And so all the numbers that I presented to you today are just kind of based on a couple of numbers that we've gathered here, if we could get some more exact figures and we could put more, more exact cost and then yield from it, then I think we can evaluate or assess it more above with it, correct?
I mean, I like the, the idea of a you know, some kind of pilot project, you know, ten panels or something that says, assess the yield, see if we could come up with something there and say, oh, based on the real yield, here's what it would really be. It seems to make sense to do something like that to just, yeah, just instead of just jumping into a million dollar project hoping that's, it's gonna be something, it may not be, you know.
Okay, so anybody else have any questions or comments about this? Okay, so we want him to go ahead and continue to get a little more information on this.
We'll do that tomorrow, we're gonna meet tomorrow at eleven.
And then you wanna bring it back to a September thirtieth, we need to put that on here, okay. Okay, is there any, committee, anybody else have an ad hoc committee report? Derek, you're not quite ready yet.
No, no, we're gonna bring this back for another month or so, yeah.
Okay, you think September thirtieth or do you wanna go November?
Might go November, yeah, since we're shortening this month, yeah.
Okay, committee member communications, does anybody have anything related to our purview resources and infrastructure that they would like to relay your activities or anything? Mr. Webb?
Well, I thought I'd bring up, I mentioned the fact that it looks like the Chumash Heritage Sanctuary is in the final phases of approval through Congress. And that establishes what they, they said was the gap sanctuary between Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary and Channel Islands Marine Sanctuary is the one proposed literally off of moral bay, kind of running down toward wind conception that area. And it's a rather large area and it will regulate primarily things like drilling, the mining and stuff like that, not fisheries related topics, so that proposal is moving forward. I just thought I should know that.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, before we get to the utility, okay?
One other item.
Okay.
Just because the D cell plant has been on our list of potential water sources, the county of San Luis Obispo did release an RFP for planning the D cell plant. The proposals are due in a week or so, but it's the first step just in a very, very long process, like a fifteen year process or something. But they are moving forward with selecting people to start the initial planning, looking at what the feasibility might be. I believe we're on the county water action teams, is that what it's called? We are indeed, yeah, we're voting members, C W A, we met informally with, the county has chosen Corolo. They didn't choose someone already, okay. To spearhead this, we had some informal talks with Corolo and their environmental representative, which is onfluence engineering, which also did our watershed sanitary survey report. So they just wanna kind of, they're kind of in the data gathering phase right now, so they wanna see, you know, what we have, what, what, what are our needs up here? I think especially with the county considering taking over San Simeon. Our two agencies are kind of on an island up here, so extending those infrastructure and lines to us would be, you know, beneficial, so again, we just kind of had a short meeting, talking about our needs, our thoughts, our ideas and just kind of hit the ball back and forth for a little bit, but it's very productive and it was a great discussion. Great, what's going on in the background?
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I don't see any hands up from the public. So let's go ahead and move ahead to Mr. Green's utility department manager report.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, we've got a, talked a couple of RFPs here lately and one of them was for the rodeo grounds, rodeo grounds backup power generator installation. We've received the blessing from legal counsel, we posted the RFP to the website. We've already had a couple of hits as of this morning with proposals, a couple of questions we haven't had in the drop yet, but some, some questions, inquiries to some of our specifications and so far in there. So I, I think it's fantastic, well, you get a good list to kind of bring you guys and have a discussion with us. That does, the RFP closes on September twenty-fifth. If you know of anybody and they're kind of dragging their feet, they've got a couple of weeks, but we are, we will be strict on those and there'll be sealed bid proposals that we'll receive and we have to open them in a public forum.
That one we do not open.
That one don't, okay.
But we will invite the public to come to the wastewater plant and watch the video.
In the meantime, is the, is the existing emergency generator operational? Yes. That's good.
Let me interrupt you, just like Ms. Connolly, I just saw your hand up and I'll call on you when Mr. Green is done with his report. Okay, I didn't want to think I was ignoring her, I missed it for raising my hand.
Yeah, we'll get to all the questions here. At East West restroom, we are finishing up the RFP for that and that will be submitted to the website and we'll also distribute that to local newspapers and any free bid opening formal RFP related outlets for that. Again, we'll be doing the site preparation in October and then we just confirmed today that the actual restroom itself has begun production, so. Yeah, that's, again, that was that forty-six week time initially that I think we were down to about, what, thirty-six, listen, actual production weeks?
And actually, yeah, we're still estimating a end of January, beginning of February delivery date.
Yes, so yeah, that's confirmed, late January, early February, delivery date for the restroom there. Skate park, we had a fantastic ad hoc meeting here the other day where we approved a vendor for design. It will be Swan Ranch, everyone's looking forward to. Just you wanna give us some updates on that?
On the, yeah, so Swan Ranch submitted an excellent proposal that met all of the requirements exactly as we, we asked, which the others proposal did not, so. And yeah, we're excited to work with them, they're, they're gonna, it's gonna be, I believe, at least one additional round of public input for the design before it goes to hundred percent, and once that hundred percent, we'll get some construction drawings that we can use for our county building permit submission.
Did you see any conceptual drawings or any?
They're gonna, they're gonna work on the one that we've started already, so it's gonna look very similar to what we have, but we're just gonna finalize it, make sure it's exactly what the public wants.
Will be board approval, correct, for the, what we decided on?
Think so.
Okay.
Also some behind the scenes on that is the National Park Service, you know, we have a, excuse me, a grant through them. We spoke with Lydia Willett last week, we submitted a ten ninety or ten nine zero four application for that. So far, we haven't gotten any word back, we'll find out if there's anything incomplete on that application. We are also filling out a AR budget spreadsheet with that, that we'll be working with finance to finalize some of those. Again, this is going clear to the post-construction phase and we're kind of ballparking or thinking what we need for costs going through the finalization of this. And she estimated a receipt date of January twenty twenty-five for those, for that grant funding, so. San Simeon transmission line, our Caltrans encroachment permit, we're still working on with our consultant. They've done some pot-holing and some geo-inspection and we should be seeing some of the results from that and hopefully we'll be providing you with an update on that here within the coming weeks, but that's pretty much the last piece of the puzzle we have for permitting, while this is going on, while we develop the alignment. We were having our consultant do all of our environmental evaluation, surveying, and so you'll see a lot of those reports come back as well. Our storage tank project is coming right along, even though we've had several iterations now, we have orientation of the tank here. We've just verified some of the section one oh six complaints requirements that we need. So we're working right now with Leah Teague of the EPA to see how deep we have to go, if we have to do like a full one oh six like we had to do for the east west branch restroom. So they're getting back to us with that, but that's kind of the final permitting things we need for our environmental requirements for that. Um, so the station B on part of the SST program, I guess PG&E has yet, I, I think they have some design and some estimates from Southland, but they haven't released them to us, remember this is a PG&E program to the SST. So they provide us with that proposal, we can bring it to the RNI committee.
E four.
Or B four, sorry.
Yes.
The, the B four upgrade to that lift station, so we'll bring those costs associated with that and then the scope. Here hopefully in the upcoming months, either October, November, or I'm sorry, the late September, November meeting. Uh, Tim, do you wanna give some updates today on the SST or?
So on the SST, we had a tough automation come out and also South, Southland's representative and they placed the main SCADA board into the old R I O P cabinet, so they gutted that cabinet and put in the new components for the SCADA. And we were also able to pull a bunch of wire from the old, old plant from the seventies and pull that to get that out of the way of the project during this time and clear it out. We're looking at other, other uh, low line in the project where we can get other advances, but right now there's some contractual issues going on between the subcontractor or the contractors and the general contractor. Uh, that is, seems to be delaying our project and so we're looking at means to what we can get done before the rainy season, which would push our projects to a halt.
And we have to be careful with some of the projects that we go ahead and break ground on, that we complete that before the wet season begins, obviously, we don't want the open trenches and conduits, you know, eight foot underground open that we have sealed up or, you know, bring back to existing conditions.
Right, some of the proposals we're working on, the south digester prep, putting in the inserts for new piping and also recoding those digesters and getting, getting them ready for new air headers, items like the demolition of MCC two, which is going to be removed. And other items would be maybe some pot-holing or underground prior to the start of the major work.
And when you say pothole, you're just trying to locate the infrastructure underground.
Locate existing piping that will be removed or changed.
You're, you're the existing SCADA system up and running, right?
Yes.
And finally, kind of a little project we have going on, we will be taking receipt of an electric vehicle for the on-call operated either water or wastewater right now. Within the next month or months, we are working with the AP CD and Tom Hickey. There's some funding for this, they're funding up to seventy-five percent of the project, no vehicles, but just seventy-five percent of the project, so breaking ground. Any upgrades to the panels, pulling the electrical lines all the way up to seventy-five percent of purchase of the actual chargers themselves. And the commercial fast DC chargers, they're spending, they're about fifteen to seventeen grand and up per device. So we've got a electrical contractor came out last Friday, took a second look at everything and he's gonna provide us a proposal and scope with that, we'll take that and we'll submit that to the AP CD as our scope and we'll see what we can do as far as funding, a lot of the scope for these projects. There's a lot of dollar amounts out there, obviously they're, they're pushing the EV very heavily for commercial fleets. We're trying to get one in by the tenth, that's up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, obviously we won't need that kind of that volume for the cost, but that drops the tent, so we're kind of on a little timeline here to try and receive some proposals for the, for that installation, just so we can cut the cost of that.
Are you gonna get two vehicles?
Yeah, we'll have a wastewater on-call pickup, that's electric, zero emission, and then a water on-call pickup that's zero emission as well.
And you'll have an onsite charger.
And we'll have an onsite charger.
Cool.
Uh, in the meantime, we're also looking at, we have our our case, our, our big heavy-duty backhoe, that's probably thirty-five plus years old, is starting to have some hydraulic problems and it's getting very costly. So we're starting to look and see proposals and get some ideas on what it's gonna cost for a new tractor, a new tractor of that size is around a hundred grand. An electric case is about three hundred grand, but the state of California is giving you two hundred thousand dollar funding if you wanna purchase that and easy, and electric vehicle, yeah, yes, absolutely. So yeah, it costs three times the cost, but they're providing, you know, two thirds of that for that upgrade, which would work off the charges that we're going to have installed, so just some ideas that we're kicking around here, as soon as we get some more finite numbers and, you know, we have some comparisons, apples to apples here, we can bring that forward to RNI and discuss that as well. Uh, so with that, that's pretty much all my updates on projects and wish list.
Zero liquid discharge.
Zero liquid discharge, great, thank you for bringing that back up, I didn't mean to skip over that. John Limbley, who's associated with Global Water Solutions is in the Middle East right now, wanna run one of these zero liquid discharge programs as soon as he gets back with the ZLD permeate constituent analysis, we're gonna submit that to our regional water boards and we're gonna develop some sort of monitoring and analysis program for this while we're running our pilot. And if the pilot is successful, we'll kind of use that as a basis on our low-threat discharge permit that we currently have and, and use that for operations going forward, so we just need some of that information and that analysis that we don't have here. But we've been, we've been bugging the vendor and so forth, so we should have information by this, we can submit that James Bishop and regional water boards and the division is drinking water, Jason Cunningham as well.
Okay. Any questions from the committee, Mr. Dujic?
I have two, first one, I've seen a lot more, a little bit more traffic on the internet on Whale Rock, is there anything going on there really, or is it just people coming up saying, oh, look, Whale Rock, yeah. Something should happen there.
Whale Rock currently right now has no open allocations. Uh, we were told earlier this year, uh, but county maintains that, that's part of the flood control district right now, that's, okay. There will be reevaluating those allocations for the future, so obviously there's some interest in there and we'll be taking a look at that as soon as, there's something to talk about, right now, there's no allocations and they said by the end of this year they'll be talking about reallocating, but we've had not, not anything brought to our attention yet.
Has there been a formal statement of interest or something similar from CCSD to indicate that should they be thinking about it, we would like to be considered?
Just informally, yeah, we haven't released any official statements for the record.
Okay.
And I don't think we would until allocations come out.
Right, as long, I, I guess we're connected nonetheless to the process so that I mean, a, a lot of times these deals are made early and then they're, they're announced and so I just wanna be sure that we're on the critical path for any early deals that may come up. And for example, you know, there might be conversations with the county relative to San Simeon and in, now that we're talking about the uh, D cell plant, historic process starting up, you know, there could be some opportunities in there for some collaborative discussions between the counties, us, San Simeon, et cetera, just.
Yeah, absolutely, so I mean, we'll have a seat at that table for at least informal discussions.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll warrant all those.
Okay, the second one was last week, Tristan, and we talked about the potential for looking for that new well. That mysterious new well out there that we, that maybe could provide twenty gallons a minute or more or something. Is there, has there been any more progress on that effort?
So I think the only progress on that is we would need to come up with a set of criteria against which we would be looking at evaluating potential sites. So that would be the next step, would be coming up with that set of criteria, it's gotta be outside of the current groundwater basin that we have access to. That's the biggest criteria. And then we have to, we have to go and develop the other criteria, they go on that, okay.
Do we, would a subcommittee help?
I don't think at this point, yeah, I think we'll be a little bit closer to something becoming more definite than
I'm volunteering if you want to.
I appreciate it.
General manager, Matt, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, cause, cause Mr. Dujic and I have had conversations and Jim, myself and Tristan, some of what really needs to happen is that this needs to be from a committee up perspective, so we can get direction from the board. So when we look at these types of things, when we're talking about allocation from Whale Rock, Nausicaäno Pipeline, you know, all of those are pretty some big tick items and, you know, staff will need direction from the board to really start heavily investigating these things. Rather, you know, like Jim says, we're in those informal conversations, but any formal statements of interest and things of that nature, I'm sure Jim would agree, staff would feel more comfortable if directed from the board. So if this was to be agendized at the RNI committee and it was pushed up to be a discussion and consideration to direct staff to investigate those types of things, I think we would be on better ground and better footing, so just, just a caveat there. But you know, staff is always looking at sustainable water solutions and, and things of that nature. But, but before we progress into investing money or any type of expenditures on new wells, new aquifers, new water connections, I feel this, this would be the committee to drive that and push it upwards if that, if that is what the committee would like.
And before we ever sign any letter of the tank, they would require board resolution.
Okay, so of Mr. Reaper do a little more investigation on the well situation and give him back with a little more information about our options with Whale Rock and all of that. And then we can form an ad hoc committee to help, or do you wanna form an ad hoc committee to?
Well, let's, let's, again, we're kind of data gathering here, let's get, I, I don't like to bring any quasi projects to there, I'd like to have some more definitive numbers that we can actually have something to talk about.
Okay.
Et cetera, so.
Okay, anybody else in the room?
No, I think he's still kidding.
Yeah, Kitty's still on here, Ms. Connolly, go ahead, sorry for the wait.
Well, that's okay, thank you. Chair, board member, I'm trying not to say President Dean, cause it's, it's been that long for me. Or remember, I'm trying not to say President Dean, because it's it's been that long for me. No, I was waiting for public comment, thanks for the opportunity to address the committee. For those who don't know, I'm Kitty Conley, Executive Director of the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. But I apologize for my voice, I am homesick. But I saw that the committee is considering Fiscalini Ranch Preserve as a site for a potential municipal well. And I wanted to remind you that the conservation easement. An agreement crafted by, crafted with and signed by CCSD may prohibit such activity. Under prohibitions enumerated in the easement. I'm going to read a little bit here. F, any exploration or extraction of oil, gas, minerals, hydrocarbons, soil, sands, gravel. Or other material in or on or beneath the property. Any grading, ditching, drilling, excavating, drilling, uh, sorry, draining, drilling, disposal. Removal of topsoil, sand, rock, gravel or minerals, or the disturbance of the surface. Or change in the topography of the property, except to the extent strictly related to activities permitted under Exhibit E. So that's all F, and this is G, any transfer, sale or appropriation of water rights. Associated with the property, any exercise of riparian or appropriative water rights associated with the property for purposes. Inconsistent with the provisions of the easement. Further, potable water uses shall be provided only from the CCSD municipal water supply. And not from wells or other sources located on the property. Uh, thank you, I think that's probably all the talking I can do.
Thank you, hope you feel better now, sounds like it pretty much covers. Yeah, the well issues, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Crosby or Laura Schwartz. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Dean, members of the committee and members of the staff.
We can hear you.
Are you still here?
Can you, can you hear me now, I I just got a unmute.
Yes, yes.
Zero liquid discharge, a couple of months ago, Mr. Easter from Global Water Innovations. Said he was planning to add a second design configuration to the pilot unit. Involving separation of the Brianway stream into two streams, and that's basically all the information that he gave. I was just wondering if we had any more information about. You know, what how the, what the purification process would actually be for that second configuration, is it still. The reverse osmosis system, or is it some different? Uh, process, we just don't have a lot of information.
Uh, well, the process is using. The process he actually uses is forward osmosis, which is very similar reverse osmosis, but he hasn't submitted any updated. Designs to us.
Okay, I was hoping you'd have, you you might try to get some more information, because the district needs to be able to. Follow this closely to be able to make decisions about, you know, how to proceed. Not only with the pilot project, but after that, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, once we get the additional information, we already talked about a little few minutes ago from Clark Easter. Will we be having him come back to R and I?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be a good opportunity to get the additional information that Mr. Schwartz is asking about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Be good, anyone else? I see no other hands up. So, um, public comment on items not on the agenda, but under the purview of the R and I committee. Does anyone have any public comment? Anyone on Zoom? We only have one person in the audience in the room that's not a director. Ms. Seaver, do you have any questions or comments? No, okay, okay, go ahead, move on to the consent agenda. The meetings from the last minutes from the last meeting are on the agenda packet, does anyone have any corrections? That they see need to be made? I have one question, is Mr. Gillen's name, have one L or two? Two, okay.
Is that a typo?
Well, you did two Ls to begin with, and then the rest of them are one and all.
Okay, this is the, you're on from AP CD or so-called rather.
Yes, yes, it is, okay, so it is two Ls, I wasn't sure either.
Okay.
When you send it to me to look over, I don't think I changed that. Maybe I did, I don't think so, I think you had one L everywhere except the first time you mentioned him.
I will, I will fix that, okay.
Okay, anything else, anyone sees in the minutes that need to be adjusted? Okay, then can I have a motion to adopt from minutes as written with the correction of Mr. Gillum's name?
I'll make a motion to resolve.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Mark Meats and a second by Jim Webb, I'm going to do a roll call because the people at home can't tell who voted what. So, Mr. Meeks.
I'm.
Mr. Will.
Hi.
Mr. Dujic.
Hi.
Mr. Seaver.
Hi.
And Mr. Williams. It is unanimous. Okay, regular business. Agenda item four A, we're going to receive and review the completed in-stream flow study and consider forwarding a recommendation to the CCSD Board of Directors. You want to go ahead and use the item?
Absolutely, I'm interested. Um, so the in-stream flow study is an assessment of the stream, street flows. And associated aquatic habitat in the lower San Simeon Creek and San Simeon Creek Lagoon reaches. Intended to assess the impacts of the municipal water diversions. Scope of the study was expanded in twenty twenty-three to include lower Ben Gordon Creek, based on the documents received on the first draft of the study. Uh, looking at presented here is the final version of the in-stream flow study presented by Stillwater. So Stillwater originally did the assessment during a county-wide assessment in two thousand fourteen. And this is for the purpose of environmental water demand, it was a study conducted in two thousand fourteen to provide. A preliminary estimate of the magnitude and timing of in-stream flows that would support Steelhead and. The creeks of San Luis Obispo County, so they did this all over the county. This was a rather broad assessment, this wasn't specifying municipal use or. Uh, what the impacts that would have on aquatic life, so this was specifically designed for that. So this is the upgraded document to this and. It's very depth, it's very thorough, I think there's close to three hundred pages. You see all the breakouts, the history going back to seventy of creek flows and and so forth, so it's a fantastic document and I'm. Here to talk about it or answer any questions that I can.
Okay, has everyone here had a chance to read it? Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Green on anything that is in this in-stream flow study?
I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know if you can answer them, I got a little confused up places. In the conclusions, there's a paragraph three where rearing habitat has a flow prescription on it.
What page are you on?
Well, let's see, I think I wrote this, I wrote down some of the pages. Yeah, or thank you very much.
Uh, no document, page forty-seven?
Uh, it's document, yeah, document page forty-seven, uh, page sixty-one of the packet there. I got a little confused because the juvenile steelhead rearing habitat had a flow, I don't know if it's a flow prescription. Or a flow device of one CFS. On the other hand, the document also points out that the flow actually stops much of the year there and there are. Um, isolated pools where the juvenile are found there, I'm not sure how we interpret the statement that. Could impact the rearing habitat requirement of one CFS. Not having any, it seems like we ought to be focusing on. Pumpings impact on the pools rather than pumping's impact on a flow. Uh, at that point, that just was a little confusing to me.
Okay.
There.
I think that was my overall question too, is how does this report, you know, impact our. Ability to, you know, pump water if it does at all, it seemed at some, at one point, we had, it seemed like. We were okay, it seemed like it wasn't, we weren't, you know, having a a major impact on. The operations of the of the of our pumping, I forget the name of the pump number, it's seventy.
Ninety-seven?
But, um, but on the other hand, it's. There's other people, there's private wells there too that, you know. I think we don't coordinate with them at all, there's no coordination between us and.
Not agriculture or pumping, no, not for private wells, so I think they're. We're kind of correlating how this this would dry up with or without municipal pumping.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just going to drop a tiny bit sooner.
It's natural, we'll do it even if we're.
You're going to have those pools, we're going to have the juvenile or even more elderly steelhead that get trapped in them with or without municipal pumping.
We get stranded, so they also recommended that when that happens, we go out and try. Get fishing game involved and net them and relocate them.
Absolutely.
And we do that now?
Um, we don't do that, but yeah, but so we, like our AMP or our biologists, biologists that go out there and do the surveys. They would go ahead and do that, yeah. I think they're, they're, they're pretty, pretty intent on being trained on how to handle them, rather than having my water operators just go throw them in a. Coleman cooler and home somewhere, so, yeah. And I don't think we're going to start any operator training on, uh, steelhead relocation anytime soon, but yes, yeah.
I mean, we mean it, I said.
Yeah, Mr. Reaper's point was exactly what I took away, the main impact is like between four and five CFS there. You get down to four CFS just more quickly that way. Is that, is that going to be part of the monitoring that we are looking at flows in a very, very, very narrow range there or?
Absolutely, okay, but so they give, um, monitoring suggestions here, you know, requirements and I think. You see in those, especially during operation of the WRF.
Right.
Yeah, we're all those.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The general manager wants to speak, let's let us, what he has to say.
No, I just wanted to follow up on what on what Jim was saying is that the in-stream flow study is basically saying that these creeks. Dry up naturally and that these pools, you know, tend to dry up and get isolated. Um, this will help us with our amendment that's going to the board for our consultant SWCA to help us develop. The adaptive management plan so we can adjust, you know, to these scenarios. I think the good thing about this in-stream flow study is is putting it out there that this is something that naturally occurs without the WRF running. And we haven't operated the WRF in a very long time, and this is what occurs naturally over time. So it's not the CCSD that is affecting these pools or the stream flow. So I think that's one positive light that comes out of this, is that this is the natural state of these creeks. And now we know that, we have that documented in this research, and so moving forward as we. Move this project description and this CDP forward, we're going to work with SWICA on developing an adaptive management plan. That can help with these types of things, that'll go forward with the mitigation of the Coastal Commission and things of that nature. But it's a start to establish the baseline of what occurs in these creeks. Without CCSD involvement, if that makes sense. Did I capture that right, Jim?
I think, I think there's a lot of emotional thought by some of our regulatory agencies. Um, but there's been no really quantitative threshold of significance assigned to any of this, and this is what this document is doing. It's actually putting numbers and metrics that are attainable, that we can see through our adaptive management process where we see those effects early. And then we can, again, adapt our management style or flow where we can provide more mitigation water, slow down our pumping or cease pumping. And, uh, so, yeah, this is providing concrete evidence and information here rather than just emotional thoughts and.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I would just comment, it's a comprehensive report, the conclusions are well-written. And and I think the points that you all made are appropriate.
Okay. Have any, oh, I see a hand up in the public, is the second? Go ahead, I believe it's probably Crosby.
Yes, it is, thank you, I have a comment on the attachment one. Recommendations, this on page, pages one eighty-four and one eighty-five of the agenda package. Just caught my eye, it says, for. Stream flows between zero and one cubic feet per second, uh, no pumping is to occur during this range of flows. Obviously, that's a problem for the CCSD because we need. Some pumping to provide water to our customers, I don't know if they were thinking that we would switch over to the Santa Rosa Creek well, but of course. That doesn't really accomplish anything because they have the same environmental issues over there that they do in San Simeon, so. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that if they're recommending no pumping during certain stream flows, that's a potential problem for the district.
They measuring.
Okay. Have anything to add? Okay, thank you, Crosby, um, Ms. Bentonhausen, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President, um, I'm curious, I don't quite understand. Whether this document has already gone to the CCSD Board or. Has not gone to the CCSD Board, that's, there's some confusion in the public about that, so. If, um, perhaps the general manager could clarify, has this document gone to the county already? Or has it not?
I I can answer that. So this document, this document was submitted with our updated project description to the county. Uh, Jim knows the exact date, it was not this last Friday, but two Fridays before that. And it was submitted to the county. Um, this document will come before the board for a presentation, Jim and I are kind of working on that with, um, a more digestible. Presentation for the public, um, that will go over the conclusions, we have to meet with her. Um, with Stillwater and Mr. Yates to see when he's available and if he's available to do it. Um, but in some form or fashion, it'll be presented to the board, um, for an informational purposes, but. It's not a document that goes before the board for approval, the document is what the document is, it is created by some very. Very highly trained and educated environmental scientists, so it's not our document to approve or disapprove of. Uh, or for the board to take action on, but we can bring it before the board and and plan to bring it before the board for an informational session. But this has already been submitted to the county with the project description. And we will work with our consultants, SWICA, SWCA to work on the AMP policy consistency analysis. EIR addendum, SEQA, and that will, um, that will be submitted to the county once that's complete as well.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions, Ms. Bentonhausen?
Uh, yes, I'm, am I?
You're still on.
Okay, um. Let me be, I want to be clear about this, what you're saying is that certain documents only are comprehensible by the board. That's, the board can understand certain kind of documents, but can't understand a document like this, is that? That that's implied in what you're saying, I don't, I don't assume that you mean that. But what do you mean, why wouldn't this document be, um, subject to the approval of the board? If it's part of the CDP, which has been forwarded to the board? I don't, I don't get it.
So. Yeah, I think you, I think you, yeah, maybe you don't understand it, but the document is a part of the in-stream flow study. That's created by the environmental sciences, which the board approved, this scope amendment. The product is what the product is, the board has been provided the in-stream flow study, it's publicly available, it went out in a letter. Each board member has access to it, as do all of our committee members today. I know I implied that the board is not able to digest it, in fact, our ad hoc committee has been working with us very closely, which consists of two members of the board. On this document, so, um, the board is very well-versed in the document, they can understand the document. So in no way am I implying the board doesn't understand the document. It's just not a document that goes before the board for approval, it it's, it's a doc, it is, it is the product for which the board approved. Us paying for. The results are what the results are. I don't know how, how to explain to you.
It's a study.
Correct, I think it's also kind of similar to like our compliance reports and our regular regulatory compliance. Documents that we put forward, like our water, sanitary survey, watershed sanitary survey rather, that comes out, um. Those are done by consultants, seasoned professionals, um, it's not that no one can understand it, it's just. Those are done by consultants, seasoned professionals. Um, it's not that no one can understand it, it's just that's, that's a direct submittal or. I'm I'm not gonna go for the board to turn in a total call form report every month just to. Show that document, that those are publicly available documents that's released and submitted based on our data. So this isn't something up for review that can be either approved or disapproved by a board or an advisory committee, you know.
And this was already vet.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Chair. I was just saying, this was already vetted through the board. The amendment to the scope for the in-stream flow study to include Van Gorn Creek was a part of it, was approved. And this is the result of that approval. That's all it is.
And this is before the RNI Committee today for us to look through and to ask any questions that we may have. And also to give the public of another chance to look. At it and ask any questions and make any comments. And the same thing, it will go before the board. For information and another opportunity for the directors and the public to ask any questions regarding this. So that is what we're doing is we're trying to get this out in the public eye as much as possible. So that everyone has an opportunity to ask whatever questions they have to make sure we all understand the results of this study. And it's, I think that's pretty much what we're doing, right? But, okay. So does anyone else? Questions regarding this report? Okay, um, important, so um. We're gonna forward a recommendation to the Board of Directors for them to bring it forward at a meeting for the same purpose. To review this and to give the public eye on it and the board directors a chance to ask questions on it. So does someone wanna make a a motion to go ahead and forward the recommendation that this go to the board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Mr. Dujic made the motion to go ahead and forward this to the Board of Directors. And Mr. Meeks seconded the motion, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Dujic.
Aye.
Mr. Meeks.
Aye.
Mr. Seager.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
And Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a unanimous vote to forward this to the Board of Directors. Okay, agenda item four B is to receive and discuss information on the adaptive management plan, and we're doing the same thing with that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you might go ahead and introduce the item.
Absolutely, um, this is a review and uh. Our committee approved to forward to the Board of Directors an amendment to the consultant services agreement with SWICA for assistance with our. WRF CD application, specifically the adaptive management process update. Uh, we we knew going into our project description that our uh AMP needed to be a little bit more robust. And we wanted to kind of give SWICA a chance to produce this document and work with them and kind of see what areas for opportunity in the camp. Uh, would need and uh. With great work, great collaboration working with SWICA. And uh, this is why we're kind of choosing them uh to continue on with our adaptive management process. Uh, this is gonna take um several things into account, so the addendum will include. A supplemental EIR pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section one five one six four. The addendum will include a post certification checklist to evaluate the potential for new or more severe impacts to any. Issue areas required to be analyzed under SEQA. The addendum will reference the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and SEQA findings and provide evidence supporting a determination. That the currently proposed WRF would not result in any new significant impacts or increase the severity of previously identified. Sign significant impacts. Uh, additionally, SWICA will prepare a memorandum detailing the CSEs compliance with condition six of the emergency CDP. Which outlines the required information for the submittal of a regular CDP. And anticipates that this memorandum will be an attachment to the CDP project description application packet. And will assist the county in reviewing the project for consistency with the conditions imposed on the emergency CDP. Given the project's extensive history.
And the adapted management plan in here is the one that was previously done.
The Michael Baker, the twenty.
The Michael, okay, and this is what they're going to be going through and amending, so there are a couple of things in here. On the groundwater basin. Um, so um, this says. That we would be storing raw water in Van Gordon Reservoir replenished by the Sansimian well field during the wet season. Um, and we know that the water deficient, the drinking water won't let us pump from the Sansimian wells to above ground or below ground storage.
We have no diversion stories.
Yes, so that's something that they're gonna work on and examine, okay. Okay, um, and they'll correct that spelling mistake. It's, we're not, it's not a spay, it's not a spay evaporator, it's a spray evaporator. We weren't fixing any critters here, no, okay. Okay, does anyone on the committee have any um comments?
And any old acronyms will be updated, like SWF, etc.
Yeah, um, the the agencies are still calling this an SWF, or they know that we're changing the name for the WRF?
They know, I still think they refer to it as this. It's hard for me to sometimes, I think, cause I think the project was the many iterations. But that kind of stuck around the longest, but I think it's just muscle memory rather than, you know, refusal to change, I just say.
So when they do the amendment to this, are they gonna?
Right.
Make it known it's a WRF.
From my understanding, it'll be a a new document with this referenced, but what you see is probably about twice the volume of narrative. And then we'll do a lot deeper dive. This is really in early stages of the WRF. And so um, we don't have much more operational history, but we have a lot more history on our impacts and our monitoring for the same.
Okay.
And and you'll have a history of the names in the report as well.
So that'll take up a whole chapter.
Exactly, so there's no confusion, at least if you're reading that report, someone's reading that report, they can go, ah. In fact, here, it said this went from here to here, the begats, you know, this began that, so.
Yes, we we hear that quite often, the history, the AWP, TP, EWS, ESRF, the W.
EWS, yes.
Yeah.
All the others.
All of it, so, okay, but most of the documents that we've seen since it was built have said SWF until it became the WRF. Okay, anybody in the room have any questions or comments?
I only want to say that I agree with Chair Dean, this uh, the Baker report seemed pretty dated when I read it. There were a lot of things. Yeah, I I would just support this because we definitely need a different plan. It's a, it's a plan for a slight. A somewhat different project or program, basically.
It was kind of like the Stillwater twenty fourteen. Watershed, they kind of painted with a broad brush, I'm not gonna say they rushed it through, they're they're both fantastic, you know, consultants in their own right and very well respected. I think maybe perhaps a little rushed, both of these documents are not um more narrowed in scope. Like these are intended to be now, but both documents, IFS and this as well, so we we knew there are some areas for improvement. Um, but we wanted to work with the consultant and kind of develop a trust and a collaboration level with them and um. I think we have that with them, that's why we trust them going forward with this.
Good, cause this one, the old one did strike me a bit as a plan to make a plan also.
Yes.
It was a broad idea, but it was a plan to make a plan. I'd like to see that fleshed out a bit more.
Which is, uh, we we knew that was, it was obvious to us going ahead before we got together with county that that would be, you know, areas for improvement that they request. And they had made some requests in the in their tack comments years ago, so yeah, those will be the first that we address.
Okay.
And we'll have more specific language in there when, you know, at this time, this will take place and.
Right.
Kind of like negotiates uh when to operate or how to operate for plants.
Right.
Puts in metrics and well levels and, you know, moisture levels and rain data and all that, those those all go into that equation of operation.
And SWICA is the consultant that worked with the district on the CDP project description and.
Oh, good, okay.
Vice President, President Gray and I were part of that ad hoc committee. And and met with him quite often and they're very competent, they know what they're doing. I have every confidence that they'll do a good job on what we're asking them to do.
Great, thank you.
Hey, anybody here have any questions about what we want to do with this? No, anybody in the public? Anyone on Zoom have any questions or concerns? I don't see any hands up, so we need to take a motion.
To recommend.
To recommend.
This, oh, just to recap, this is to to hire SWICA to redo, to reevaluate the data plan, correct?
Among other things.
Yeah, it's it's basically updating our adaptive management plan in coordination with our project description, so that way those two will be integrated. And not two separate documents.
Okay, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by uh Committee Member Meeks and a second by Committee Member Dujic. I'm gonna take a roll call, Mr. Meeks, our, Mr. Dujic.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Mr. Seager.
Aye.
And Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay, good. So moving on, um, as I said in my uh chair report last one. Um, the board has decided to um change the approach of when our meetings are scheduled. And we're going to one board meeting a month, which will be the second Thursday of the month. And what we're going to be doing is trying to group the um. Standing committee meetings so that two of them are on a Monday following the second Thursday of the month. And two of them are on the third Thursday of the month. Um, so we've worked with the policy um committee, not the policy, the finance committee. Um, they would like to keep their meetings in the morning, and I believe we talked about this last time, that we like our afternoons on Mondays. So you'll find in the agenda packet the dates that you're looking at, um. It does say our nine meeting, then financing exactly the other one, so finance will be in the morning and our nine will be afternoon. And I like the fact that we're gonna have both of those uh committees meeting on the same day. Because occasionally we do have a special joint meeting and we're already scheduled for those days. So um, you have it before you the dates that are under consideration. I'm hoping that you've already reviewed those dates and checked them with your calendar. And does anybody have any um of those dates that they have a problem with? Okay, and I think, okay, October. The meeting was on the thirteenth, and I think I sent you all a question about whether the fourteenth would work with you, because that will work for finance. Does that work? Okay, so everybody's okay with the new schedule for twenty twenty-five? Hopefully, you all still be here in twenty twenty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, very well, let's see, do I need a motion to approve? Let's go ahead and take a motion to approve the meeting dates and times for twenty twenty-five, and these will be at two o'clock in the afternoon like they are now. Is someone gonna take a motion, make a motion to approve the dates?
I'll make a motion to approve these dates and times, um. With the change to, what is it, the October meeting?
Yeah, the meeting will be Tuesday the fourteenth.
Right.
Okay, and finance agrees to Tuesday the fourteenth, that's all I believe, okay.
It's right around budget time.
And I think that's, it's a holiday too.
True.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Columbus said they changed the name of it. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Dujic. Do a roll call. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Dujic.
Aye.
Mr. Meeks.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Mr. Seager.
Aye.
Okay, good. Um, I don't think I need to take public comment on the calendar. Okay, future agenda items, um. Now we know our meeting's gonna be September thirtieth instead of October seventh. And we moved this meeting to that day because I believe Mr. Green had something, once put on the agenda that needed some space between our meeting and their.
Uh, the generator?
The generator.
Okay, so we, um, the, again, the bids close the twenty-fifth, uh, so several days after that, we'll have this meeting where we'll review the proposals that will be received.
Okay, I've got that down. Um, we postponed the watershed sanitary survey.
I just finished edits on that this morning, so we'll have that to present.
Okay, um. Do you think we'll have more information on this liquid discharge pilot?
We better, yes.
Okay. Okay, um, so Mr. Pearson had asked us um. To bring back the biomass, biomass co-generation proposed project. Um, but what we'd like to do is we'd like to see, have anyone who has any questions or concerns. About this biomass co-generation facility that they're considering for our wastewater treatment plant site. Um, to submit those questions to Mr. Green or to Mr. Reaper? Or Mr. McAlany? So any questions to that, and then when you get the response to the questionnaire that you answered. Um, we can put it on the schedule and um. Get the answers for your questions. So in the meantime, if anyone in the public or on this committee have any questions about the co-generation plan. Go ahead and submit it to staff. Okay, is there anything else we're looking at putting on the um agenda? Any other suggestions for agenda items?
Yes, I, I would like to push for that um analysis. Sorry, Tristan, I'd like to push for that uh. The follow-on items that you mentioned were needed for the well, the new well search. Uh, criteria, et cetera, to be done by next, next meeting. Something I'd like, I really like to see moved forward, and we've got some good input today on one of the sites that we may not not wanna be looking at. But I think the last, last month, we talked about developing those criteria, and I really think we gotta put a date on it and get that moving along.
Is that something you think you'll have for September?
I can come up with my best guess, my best draft of what the criteria, the criteria were, and we can add to it in that meeting. And feel like additional criteria needed, and then we can use that as a template to go.
So the, we can establish the critical criteria, and then we can have a discussion about it, and then we can bring everything to the table for the public and.
Right.
Your concerns.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to move forward with as um, um, Mr. McAlany said. That this committee needs to be moving this forward ultimately out to the board, and so to do that, we really need to. Turn some of these thoughts and and nail them down. So that in future meetings, we're not going back and saying, oh, let's do this. When we have, haven't already said, well, that's been studied, those things are not valid criteria, based on the criteria, we've whittled it down to this, so we're moving forward.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Another features into that, we could be talking wastewater treatment plant EV chargers. So WWTP EV chargers.
Okay.
We should be able to have a scope and some more definitive numbers and figures to present for that. Many of the superintendents have any discussion topics that they'd like to, or other, besides SST?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and September thirtieth is considered a special meeting, so it would be items on the agenda only. Sorry, just to let you know that. Um, the other thing we're probably going to be doing at that same meeting is. Um, it is coming before the Board of Directors on Thursday. Um, some revisions to the standing committee and board bylaws, and so we will need to review um. The bylaws for the standing committee and what the changes are. So as long as the board approves um the changes that the ad hoc committee recommended. Um, we'll need to review those with with all of you. So I believe it's on the agenda for Thursday. Okay, anyone else have anything else they wanna see on the agenda? Some of this, I'm, that's gonna be a long meeting. Not sure. We'll see, we'll see what staff has ready on here. Okay, um, I suppose if there's any need. Before November fourth, if there's something urgent, we could always call a special meeting as well. Okay.
Our main concern with that would definitely be to cover the the generator.
Yes.
And if we have as many proposals we're anticipating, there'll be several to go over, so it will probably be. A fairly long meeting anyways, just a review of those proposals.
Okay, does anyone in the public have anything they'd like to see on the agenda? I don't see any hands up. Okay, it is three ten, and if there are no objections, I can adjourn this meeting.
Excellent.
Excellent.